The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Krusten, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Moore, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Davis, Alderman Cohn.
Present.
Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, 20 present.
Our quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Keith Clinton from Promised Land Christian Church. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we first want to thank you for another day of life. We want to thank you for the opportunity to serve others. As this automatic board moves forward in this meeting, I pray that they would operate in your knowledge, guide them by your wisdom, your love and compassion in your abiding presence of your righteous spirit. I pray that you would convict all of us to move with Godlike tenacity, with a sense of urgency as we respond to the cries of the people of this city. Help us to recognize our own blessings. Help us to move forward with humility and integrity to build a healthy, vibrant, progressive, and most of all, safe city. Through the righteous work of those who have been selected and elected to serve this city, may we witness a true revival, not only physically or economically, but morally and spiritually. As your word has said, righteousness is what exaltation and sins bring a reproach to any people. I pray your blessing as we move forward. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
That was a great prayer. We're gonna have to have Pastor Clinton back again with a prayer like that. Pastor Clinton also has a son here, Devon. Could you please stand? Devon's 18, gonna be going to do some great things. Let's give him a round of applause. He will spend with our regular order of business to take up our Courageous Resolution Council. I move for adoption, our Courageous Resolution Council, second about Alderman from the ninth. Alderman from the 28th, like to approach the dais.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Like to invite, this is a resolution for Jill Kleber. Most of you know that. I'd certainly like to invite Alderman Boyd up here who did all the work on this. So, thank you very much, Alderman Boyd. We appreciate that. And Jill, of course. Richard, you can come up here, too. Come on. So, this morning, I want to pause just for a minute to recognize the contributions of Jill Kleber. Jill is a friend of mine. I guess first I would say I'm honored to have her as my friend. She's a 28th Ward constituent and she has worked with all of us over many, many years. And so, I'm gonna take just a second and read this resolution as we get started this morning. Says Jill, whereas Jill Kleber, Acting Executive Director of the Community Development Agency, retired after 36 years of dedicated service to the City of St. Louis. Now, I know that she only looks 24 or maybe 34, but after 36 years, she started young. She began her career in the City of St. Louis in 1977 as appointed secretary to Mayor James Conway. So, I see Alderman Conway around here and I would invite you up here. Come on up here. There we go. Anybody who'd like to come up here can, of course. And whereas in 1978, Jill became the Administrative Assistant Transportation Coordinator for the mayor's office. And in 1985, she was appointed the Director of Transportation Planning for CDA. And in 1996, she became the Director of Housing Development for CDA, working to improve residential development in the City of St. Louis. She's a licensed real estate broker in the state of Missouri. She's also a certified housing development finance professional through the National Development Council's Certificate Program. And whereas, over 1,100 housing units have been newly constructed or extensively rehabilitated through CDA's housing development program under Jill's oversight. And in 2006, Jill was appointed as the Acting Executive Director of CDA and has held that position longer than her predecessors since the creation of CDA in 1974. It goes to show you, that's a tough spot there. And Jill has proven herself to be an essential asset to CDA and in her position over the past seven years, seven-plus years, and her rich knowledge has made her an invaluable employee of the City of St. Louis. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation to recognize and thank Jill Kleber and wish her well upon her retirement from the City of St. Louis and further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of the resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a commemorative copy that may be presented at the appropriate time, which is now. So, Jill, thank you so much. Where are you, Jill? Thank you so much for all your service to the City of St. Louis and for being a good friend and a great 28th Ward constituent. So, I'd like to present this resolution to Jill and then we can all talk.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you all.
Yeah, we're gonna let you speak in a minute.
Okay.
No, you're gonna speak in a minute, but a lot of people out there want to congratulate you first. Because if we let you speak first, you may try to get out of here before we. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 20th?
Yeah, we gotta give you more well wishes.
I'm usually lining up for these sorts of things. Well, I think it's surprising that as an acting director that she's been here longer than any of the other directors. And I know that she is a person who has truly demonstrated that she can manage as well as roll up her sleeves. I believe that she's been very active in the Skinker de Bolivar area for years. She is with, is that not true?
I live close by there.
So, she has been with the likes of individuals like the Shamos and the Sam Greens and the Joanne Botsches and others who have been toiling in the fields for years. I know that the last year has been a trying time. It would be a trying time for anyone and so, we've been very fortunate to have someone who's a veteran to work on those sorts of things. I did notice when I came in today that she had the biggest smile that I have not seen since I saw the smile in Iowa as she was traipsing around doing things. Because she thinks not only locally, but also globally and her heart is always with the neighborhoods and with redevelopment as well. So, my hat off to you. It is great that you are taking time to be with family because I know that's also important to you. Thank you very much for all your years of service.
Alderman from the 15th?
Thank you, Jill. I just want to thank you for your many years of service and for your toiling in the fields, as Alderman Schmidt just put it, and providing your technical expertise and your professionalism. This year has been a very difficult year and I do think this is the biggest smile I've seen in a long time. So, just know that, don't be a stranger and keep in touch. Seriously. And I hope you and Richard have a fabulous retirement. Thank you.
Alderman from the 6th?
Thank you, Mr. President. Jill, I just wanted to say thank you, not only for your years of service, but for putting up with me for the past several years, not just in my role as Alderman, but when I worked for a CUBDO as well. You and your staff were always very professional, responsive, and the expertise you were able to help impart on the role that I was playing in the 6th Ward will not be forgotten. So, thank you.
Alderman from the 25th?
Thank you, Mr. President. Jill, you know, I got elected right at the height of the foreclosure crisis here in the city. And I gotta tell you, it was a pain having to go through that. You know, not only for the folks that had to endure through that whole, you know, period in our country's history, but in our cities as well. And, you know, the work that you all did at CDA to help stabilize our neighborhoods around that time and also trying to reinvest in them has been extremely helpful. And, you know, coming in at that period and having that and also, you know, quite a few other projects and the works that CDA had their hand in. I can't tell you how much I've appreciated working with you, your leadership and, you know, your just helpful advice from time to time when I would have to call you on your cellphone in the middle of the night sometimes and get your opinion on things. So, you know, I just, I thank you for all of the work that you've put in over the years that I've known you. And I look forward to, you know, continuing our friendship going forward, too. So, congratulations on your retirement.
Alderman from the 22nd?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of board. I wanted to temporarily step down from the dais so I can look into Jill's face as I speak to, you know, the invaluable skills that she's offered to the City of St. Louis. It has been an absolute pleasure to work with Jill Kleber. You know, being an Alderman, working with Alderman, there's 28 of us with a lot of diverse and different and strong personalities. It's amazing that you've held that position for at least six years because I know we can be very trying individuals to work with. And one thing I've always, you know, think about when I call over there is it's always a warm hello and you're very soft-spoken, an even tone. I've never heard you get upset. I would hope sometime you scream and holler and let it go. But you've always been very calm. Whenever I've wanted to do something that was not within the rules and regs, you were willing to say, Alderman, you know, we can't do this, but we can maybe do it a different way and I really appreciate that. You have a wealth of knowledge and sometime we don't appreciate that. As Alderman, we just want what we want right now. But as the Director of CDA, there are a lot of rules and regulations dealing with federal dollars and you have mastered that process. No one's perfect, but I think you have done a yeoman's job. And we've come a long way with CDA since I've been here in 2003. And I just want to say, I really, really appreciate all the hard work and service that you've given to the City of St. Louis. And any employee that can do more than 30 years deserves more than a resolution. They deserve a medal. They deserve a key to the city. I almost wanted to say a street naming, but I'm not gonna go there. But anyway, Jill, it's been an absolute pleasure. Thank you so much for all you've done for the City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 3rd?
Jill, you're going to be missed. And I used to call you, I think, at least three or four times a week, sometimes twice to three times a day. But you have always been there. You haven't always done or responded in the way I would like to have done. But you were always honest in what it was that you talked about. And I'm gonna miss you over there because there's never been a time when I called and I always called that you have not come to the phone or if you were away from the office that you did call back. And I certainly appreciated that. And remember, although you didn't do or respond in the way that I wanted you to respond and I didn't get what it was all the time that I called, but you were there, you were responsive, you were very helpful and very honest insofar as what I'm able to see. Now, I don't know what happened when they told you that was me on that phone. But when you got to the phone, you came across to me like a person that was being positively responsive to whatever it was. You didn't give away all of the money that came down here to the 3rd Ward, although we deserved it. But I certainly appreciate what it is that you did insofar as a request for the 3rd Ward. You're gonna be missed. I don't know precisely who's gonna be over there, but you can let them know that I do call and I will be calling. And there are some things that we ask for in the 3rd Ward. And I just wanted to let everybody know how much I appreciate you. The 3rd Ward has more building permits than almost any ward in the entire City of St. Louis and the development that's taking place over there in the 3rd Ward. Just drive by Salisbury sometime and see what you helped do, Jill. It is phenomenal, it's fantastic, and it's great. We're gonna miss you and whoever comes on after you, you warn them that I do call a lot.
Alderman from the 8th?
My name is the President, members of the board. Just a couple of things. Jill, you've been a very effective leader. And every leader is different in that you've led with a calm demeanor. You know, I've never seen you get angry. I've never seen you get agitated. And I mean, look at this, you've worked with the 28 of us and it's a very, very difficult task. It's hard enough for me to get along with a couple of my colleagues from time to time. So, for that, we appreciate and I know from our perspective in the 8th Ward and even going through the new things in the center of the city, all of the programs and projects that we got through has made a significant difference. I've been working with Jill since I was in law school. Is, I was home, this is a little story. She put up with me for a long time. I was an angel back when I was in law school. So, anyway, I came home for a job interview and it's one of these all-day, eight-hour job interviews. And at that time, my mom and I weren't getting along really well. So, anyway, she let me take her car, said, oh, you know, get there early, you know, like a mom. Get there early, park at a parking lot. About 2:00 in the afternoon, well, I'm running late, did a meter, parked out on Olive by the Le Cleve Gas Building. About 2:30 in the afternoon, it's snowing. I looked down from the 23rd floor of the Le Cleve Gas Building and my mom's car's gone. Oh, my God. If you knew my mother, she was a tough, tough, tough Irish woman. Not that bad. Car's gone. I called Jill, so she's working for my dad at that time. She found the car for me. So, go get the car. And it was behind the KMOX Building or the 1120 Market Building. At that time, my dad was mayor. He declared a snow emergency and they had these contractors just haul the cars off. They took my mom's car. I went and got the car and the guy looks at me and says, you know what, I made so much money since your dad declared the snow emergency, I'm not gonna charge you for the tow. You know, I was a college kid. Oh, yeah, that's cool. Mom, I got a parking ticket. She, you know, gave me some grief because I didn't follow her instructions and I went back to Cleveland, Ohio. About two weeks later, I get a phone call at 6:00 AM on a Saturday morning and it's my mother. She goes, the guy that towed my car was on Channel 2 News last night saying, because my dad had decided to fire all of these guys, so they were just ripping off people. He was on Channel 2 saying, I don't know what kind of beef the mayor has with me. We just towed his son's car for free. Thank God I was 600 miles away. But Jill found the car. My dad was out of town. Jill was running the office. She did a very, very effective job. I know that they have her down as Appointment Secretary. But that was my first real interaction. You know, she solved my immediate problem. My mother and I, it took us 10 years to get over that one. But Jill, we appreciate everything and on behalf of my family, my mom and my dad, you know, you were very, very effective for my father, too. Thank you.
Alderman from the 19th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Jill, I'm gonna tell all our business, okay? We go way back to the beginning. Both of us were very, 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 very young. But you were one of those people that helped guide me when I first got involved with working for the city. And for those who don't remember or know about neighborhood marketing services, that's how far back I go. And, but you were always there, you were always helpful. I think I counted six CDA directors before you became director. There was one I just didn't count because he wasn't here for about two or three months, he had to go. But you were always who you are, no matter who was in leadership. And then after you became the leader here, you have given us a good service. Many times, many of us were not happy when we asked about things or request things or need things. But at the end of the day, what you did as best you could was to make sure that we did follow the rules and regulations. And for those who want to have something to say in the back of their mind about some current situations, I think a lot of that had to do with other things and other people and not you. And so, I would never put that blame at your foot. We have a great city. You've been a part of it for many, many years, on and off the job. You would hang out in Lafayette Square at the coffee shops with the girls and we would talk and solve all the problems of the world, but you're just a good person. And anybody who thinks anything different, they have issues themselves and don't you worry about it. But I just want to thank you for being there for me. And you know, we've been through a lot. You were there whenever I would wander off and do some other crazy task on behalf of the city, whether it was the state or the federal government, and it would always end up back the road back to City Hall. So, again, thank you on behalf of those who have chosen to be residents of the City of St. Louis. For those who have worked under you, they should know that they had great leadership and I'm gonna miss you. And thank you again.
Alderman from the 17th?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I, too, would like to rise and compliment our honoree today for her wonderful career with the city and her very patient and deliberative way of dealing with us. In my years of working with CDA, I am just baffled constantly by the complex set of rules that are tied to the money that we are supposed to be able to spend for our wards. And of course, by the time we get done figuring out all the complexity and the strings attached to it, you know, it's just really amazing. And Jill would each year come in and sit down and explain these rules to me. And by the time I left the room, I had completely forgotten them. So, she had to go through these year after year after year explaining it. She was very patient with me all those years. And I did a very good job of helping me understand why we couldn't do what we wanted to do with the money over that period of time. Because I think in many cases, the money was so restrictive that it rendered itself not nearly as useful as it might otherwise be. And people were talking about strong personalities and being difficult to get along with. This last year has been particularly a difficult one, working with the block grant money. And I am embarrassed to admit this publicly, but I got a little upset with some of the money that was supposedly, that we had publicly announced it was gonna be available for our ward and we found out that it was gonna be rescinded. And I think Jill was the victim of my disappointment. And I recall walking out of there and finally cooling off a little bit, feeling embarrassed and thinking about what my next conversation's going to be like when I have to call her up and, you know, actually do business with her. And as everyone else has already observed, she was very gracious and just kind of looked beyond my misbehavior. And Jill, thank you so much for all you've done for the city.
Alderman from the 18th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I, too, rise to congratulate you on your retirement and to thank you for your many years of service. It is unfortunate that I've had to learn so much about you when you talked about retiring. For example, I didn't know that you were a longtime friend of the, of our Alderman from the 28th. I didn't know. I didn't realize that you were a 28th Ward resident. I didn't know that you had known the Alderman from the 19th for so many years. I didn't know that you were an engineer and created the first GS mapping system according to Conway when you found his car. I've learned so much about you here today based upon the fact that you talked about retiring. With your tenure here, I availed of your expertise. I would call you with various ideas and I had some considered to be harebrained ideas, but I depended upon your expertise and you readily gave it. Sometimes you had to sit back and think for a minute and they say, I'll call you back in a couple of days to consider whatever it is that I had given to you. But you were professional. You worked well. Now, there, we know there were problems and issues and that's a part of human interaction, whether it's in government or whether it's in education, it doesn't matter. When people get together, there's sometimes problems. And you were able to maintain your cool while having those problems. I do congratulate you again. Enjoy your retirement. Perhaps do more in your retirement than you did in your work. Have a good time and thank you for being a part of the city.
Alderman from the 9th?
You didn't think that I would just sit there and be quiet. First of all, congratulations. It's well-earned, well-deserved. Like Alderman Boyd said, what you deserve, I couldn't afford to give you, you know, but I'm sure you're gonna enjoy that golden time. They tell me it's the golden years, although I don't feel that way. Unlike some of my colleagues, I have seen you a little frustrated and, you know, it's, but you're always a can-do person. You know, the one, and I was blessed to have Joanne and be able to work with both of yous. And I think, you know, yous together are just a bundle of knowledge. But it was kind of your job to keep all of us out of jail, you know, with the federal dollars. And I think you did a good job of that, saying what we can or can't do. I'm just gonna come out and say, I mean, you know, you follow the federal guidelines, you know, and you keep us straight on what we kind of can't do, although we try to get as much done as what we can. And I know sometimes it's very frustrating, but I think when you see the accomplishments and the 9th Ward is just a little part of all that housing development that, you know, you're also a part of, the accomplishments. I mean, it's just tremendous what, if you look back through the years, what you have accomplished. I'm just 14 years plus, you know, and we're still trying to get housing done and I think we're gonna be able to do that. Are you gonna keep the same cellphone? I mean, does Wessels have it?
You may want to reconsider that.
Does Wessels have your cellphone? You know, I just, you know, the best part of working with you, and I want to say this again, is you are a can-do person. You know, there were times where I felt I was banging my head against the wall for constituents with the home repair program. You know, but when you get that 6 o'clock call in the evening and that's where a lot of our conversations were actually after hours and you could sit down and talk and, you know, you figured out a way to do it, which keeps my constituents happy, which keeps me happy all the way up and keeps St. Louis a better place, you know, to live in. Because people that can't afford to put the money and invest the money into their homes, you know, we're getting it done. We're getting it done to a certain point. And, you know, that's just a little piece of it. And I think you really need to be proud of that. And I know Richard is proud of you because I've seen you out some of them 28th Ward fundraisers or occasions. So, I just wish you the best in your retirement, you know, and keep smiling. So, um, I just wish you the best in your retirement, you know, and keep smiling.
Alderman from the 11th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. Uh, Jill, uh, just, uh, thank you for giving, uh, your gift of, uh, time and talent, uh, to the city of St. Louis to make it a better place in which to live and work. Thanks.
Alderman from the 7th.
I just wanted to say thanks, add my thanks to Jill for her many years of service. The city has changed, the face of the city has changed in the years that you've been in office. And you have touched many aspects of that and all for the better. So we wish you well in whatever you choose to do. If you do a bed and breakfast in Michigan, give us an address, we'll come along. And so, good luck to you and good health.
Alderman from the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Jill, our contentious meetings over all these years, I'll miss those. It was like, how could you yell at this woman? She's the sweetest thing that ever walked the face of the earth. I can say that because my wife's out of town not watching the show today. And my other rule of business is Lyda gave me your phone to take a picture. Mr. President, step aside and he lied his stuff up here.
Okay, good.
All right, everybody say, "I'm leaving City Hall." Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Well, Jill, I tell you, I think you've heard it today. Um, you know, one of the things as, as elected officials, when we go through these projects and things all over the city, as the elected official, uh, we're in, we're in front at the ribbon cutting, uh, we're the people that they write about. They'll say, the Alderman here did this, the mayor here did that. But at the end of the day, we know that it's, it's people like yourself that delivered those projects. You have left your imprint all over this city from inn to inn, north, south, east and west. And this is our opportunity to thank you for that. This resolution that we're giving you today, it is the highest honor this board has to give. And one of the things that, that I want you to think about as you receive, uh, this resolution is that 100, 200 years from now, when they write about the history of the city of St. Louis, you won't just be listed as employee over there at CDA. They'll be able to connect the dots by watching this video. They'll be able to connect the dots by reading through this resolution to really, truly understand the true magnitude of your imprint on the city of St. Louis and the impact that you've had on families all across this city. So on behalf of the residents and the family and the people who could not be here today to thank you personally, I want to make sure to thank you also on their behalf and the rest of the members of the Board of Aldermen. You have done a phenomenal job and you should enjoy your retirement. Thank you, Jill, so much for all that you've done for the city of St. Louis.
I'm truly overwhelmed. I don't think I can find the proper words to thank all of you for this amazing, um, outpouring of, uh, sentiments and, uh, from, from friends and colleagues I value so much. I, I, I'm just very grateful and humbled by everything that you've said today and, uh, can only say again, thank you for the amazing opportunity. I've had to work with each and every one of you over the years. Uh, I'm gonna make this very brief. I, I was thinking this morning about, I believe it was someone from China who said, "May you live in interesting times." And I don't know if that's, uh, was meant as a, a curse or a good wish, but there's another version of that is, you know, "May you have the blessing of working with interesting, talented, committed people." And all of you, uh, thanks to the opportunity the mayor has afforded me and administrations before that have given me that blessing and chance. It's just been, it's, there aren't words to describe what it's meant to get to know and work with you. And, uh, the city of St. Louis and its citizens are fortunate to have you representing them and putting in the time. You know, when, when President Reed talked about the ribbon cuttings and the out-front things, he's not telling the real truth. Because I know the hard work that you all do every day in the neighborhoods in this city to make redevelopment possible. And, uh, I'm just happy to have been a part of it and working with the, I also want to say that our staff at CDA has made my job look, uh, very easy because we have a great team there that, uh, I've been very proud to be able to work with. So thank you to all of you and, uh, I look forward to maintaining our, uh, friendships in the future, uh, and look forward to staying in touch. Uh, thank you very much.
It's been moved and seconded and adopted our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Today I'd like to introduce as my special guest, my 15th Ward Committee Woman, Missy McDaniel.
Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce as my special guest today, Rachel Smith from the Secret Attorney's Office, and also Stephanie Robertson of the AMU E. Thank you.
Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have for my honored guest today and always, Ronnie Hour, one. David Rudolph and Jeff Rorda from the Police Association.
All right, welcome guys. Alderman from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I have several distinguished guests from the Carpenters District Council. I have Mr. Paul Higgins, Kevin, I'm sorry, Keith Taylor and Jeff Hans. And I also have Leroy Grant with Grant Communications and our esteemed Senator from the 5th Senatorial District. I'm sure I'm gonna share her, um, as my special guest, Jamila Nashid.
Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm not sure if she's been welcomed as a special guest this morning, uh, but I would like to have as my honored guest, Celeste Reader from the Realtors Association and Anthony Lancia, uh, from the AGC. Also, I would like to share and having Jamila Nashid, our 5th Senate, uh, Senator, 5th District Senator, as my special guest this morning. Also, a very special, uh, guest of mine this morning is Mother Nature. Our dear colleague from the 6th Ward, Christine Ingrascia, has taken it upon herself, she told me this morning, she's going to introduce a board bill to make this cold weather go away. So I would like to welcome Mother Nature as my special guest.
Excellent. Alderman from the 20th.
We are honored today to have from the mayor's office, Patrick Brown and Sabo Campbell.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I have my honored guest today, all those of you whose name were not called. And my very special guest is Marlene Davis.
Thank you very much.
Alderman from the 10th, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're gathered here on January the 24th. Today is National Beer Can Appreciation Day. Let's have a moment, thank you, thank you. It was in 1935 that the first beer was put in a can, Krueger's Cream Ale in Richmond, Virginia. Might be noted that one year later, the Board of Aldermen in Richmond, Virginia passed the first open container law. Thank you.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on approval of minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for approval of the minutes for January 10th.
Moved by Alderman from the 7th, second by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes. I have from his honor the, the following correspondence. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the East Loop Parkway Gardens Special Business District. The appointment of Sharon Echols, who resides at 6193 Delmar, and whose term will expire on December the 31st, 2017. The appointment of Lisa and, and Howdy Shell, who resides at 6161 Delmar, and whose term will expire on December the 31st, 2015. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of the City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 28th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the East Loop Parkway Gardens Special Business District.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to accept the mayor's appointment of Sharon Echols and Lisa Howdy Shell to the Parkview, East Loop Parkway Gardens Special Business District.
Moved by Alderman from the 28th, second by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
Dispense with line item 7. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We'll dispense with line items 8 through 10. First reading, board bills.
Board Bill 289, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance approving the petition of, of an owner of certain real property to establish the Community Improvement District, establishing the Magnolia Community Improvement District and containing an emergency clause and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our first reading.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to seek, um, suspension of the rules for the introduction of Board Bill 290, which you'll find on all the desks.
Been moved by Alderman from the 7th, second by Alderman from the 20, from the 22nd? That was you? Yeah, 22nd. Uh, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingrascia, Alderman Young.
Aye.
Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman.
Aye.
Alderman Vollmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Honowitz.
Aye.
Alderman, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida.
Aye.
Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman French, Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vicaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
President.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Krusen.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Conway, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Behringer, Alderman French. 21 aye votes, 1 present.
By a vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the 7th, and introduce the aforementioned bill. Madam Clerk, could you please read?
Board Bill 290, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller on behalf of the city to enter into and execute one or more amended and restated redevelopment agreements with respect to the Downtown Convention Center Hotel, prescribing the form and details of said agreements, terminating the St. Louis Convention Center Hotel Community Improvement District, approving a petition for the establishment of the St. Louis Convention Center Hotel 2 Community Improvement District, authorizing amendment to the existing intergovernmental cooperation and transportation project agreement, authorizing certain other actions of the city officials and containing an emergency clause and a severability clause.
Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bill Number 290 to HUDs.
So noted.
Reference to committee.
To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 289. To the Housing Committee, Board Bill 290. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following board bill was reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 268, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commissioner, Comptroller, and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, making certain findings with respect to the transfer of up to $13,727,769 of excess monies that the city, the owner and operator of Lambert Airport intends to transfer from the Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Airport Revenue Fund, containing a severability clause and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
We dispense with line item 14, perfection consent calendar.
Board Bill 269, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance recommended by the planning commissioner change the zoning of property from J Industrial District to G Local Commercial District, Local Commercial and Office District for properties on Grashut Street and South Vandaventure and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 270, sponsored by Alderman Ingrascia and ordinance recommended by the planning commissioner change the zoning of property from B 2 Family Dwelling District and F Neighborhood Commercial District to the F Neighborhood Commercial District only for property on Grabois containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 267, sponsored by Alderman Ingrascia and ordinance pertaining to Compton Hill Missionary Baptist Church located at 3141 LaSalle, having as subject matter, the designation of property as a St. Louis landmark containing definitions, design standards, a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 261, sponsored by Alderman Ingrascia and Alderman Young and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Dolman Street Scattered Sites Redevelopment Area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 281, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance amending ordinance 65978 and 67242, authorizing execution of a second amendment to the redevelopment agreement by and between the city and city hospital development, prescribing the form and details of said amendment, making certain findings with respect thereto, authorizing other matters with respect thereto and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 282, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance to amend ordinance 66007, recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $4 million, $4 million plus issuance cost principal amount of tax, principal amount of subordinate tax increment revenue notes for city hospital TIF RPA project of the city of St. Louis containing a severability clause. Board Bill 272, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Public Safety on behalf of the mayor and the city to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance to fund the 2013 Justice Assistance Grant Program upon approval of the Board of Estment and Apportionment and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 256, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 6301 Manchester Redevelopment Area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 279, sponsored by Alderman Wessels and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4318 Frida and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 280, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3022 Selena and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 285, sponsored by Alderman Moore and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4257 West Martin Luther King Drive and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 7th, second by Alderman from the 22nd and the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 277, sponsored by Alderman Krusen and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4633 Lindell and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 28th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 277.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to place Board Bill 277 on the informal calendar, please.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Place Board Bill Number 2- Place Board Bill number two-seventy-seven on the perfection informal calendar.
So noted. That's the extent of board bills for perfection.
We're dispense with line items seventeen and eighteen and nineteen. Also, Aldermen from the third would like any of the Aldermen to get in touch with them about putting their name on resolution, courtesy resolution, number two-oh-five for their ninety-eighth birthday. First reading resolutions.
Resolution two-oh-one, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy. The Board of Aldermen approves the Assessment and Equalization Maintenance Plan as required by law.
Aldermen from the eighteenth, you recognize on the first reading resolution, number two-oh-one.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I would move to send two-oh-one to the Ways and Means Committee.
Move by all of them from the eighteenth, entertain a second motion. Second by all of them from the twenty-second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading.
Resolution, the following resolution was reported out of the Parks Committee, Resolution thirty-three, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey. The Board of Aldermen directs the Parks and Environmental Matters Committee of this Board to continue to convene hearings for the purpose of examining the structure and organization of the Missouri History Museum, executive compensation, and all other related
Aldermen from the seventeenth, you recognize for your report on resolution number thirty-three.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The clerk has advised me that protocol calls for me to make a report today as opposed to us actually voting and approving on this. So as I understand the procedures, my committee, the Parks Committee did their investigation, and we are not going to adopt the resolution. It's just our report. We just make the report back to the full board, so there won't be a vote on this. But I think it's kind of an important thing, and I feel really strongly about what we've been doing, so I'd like to talk a few minutes about it and try to share with you my opinion and what I think perhaps is the opinion of our committee. Some of this was actually discussed today in the Post Dispatch in their editorial page, and I would encourage all of you to take a look at that. For a change, the Post and I actually agree on something. I shouldn't say that. I agree with them more often than not. And I'd like to apologize, too. I want to go ahead and properly coach my comments today. We have a report, and I'm very proud of the report and how it got out of committee. My comments aren't going to necessarily be reflective of all the members of the committee. It's going to be a bit more vitriolic perhaps than what the report would lead one to believe. And I think some of the other members of the committee perhaps don't feel as strong as I do about this. And I think it's important at times to go ahead and mute what our feelings are because you can get more things done by perhaps being a little bit more rational about this. But I'm a little bit more upset than probably more of the member, the majority of the committee. I think the report reflects our general position, but probably not as extreme as perhaps my comments are going to be today. And the reason I say that is, is I wanted to go ahead and discuss this meeting with the mayor, this report with the mayor's office, and last Friday I called the Chief of Staff of the mayor, and it's a week later and I'm still haven't gotten a call back from him. So if people, I'm thinking about taking the Housing Committee, and if we end up with a train wreck as we go ahead and try to do the CDA bill, it might have something to do with the fact that I haven't been able to get a call back from the mayor's chief of staff. I think it's much better generally to go ahead and when you have a disagreement with somebody to try to go ahead and share that disagreement in private. I think it tends to be a far more constructive environment, but since I was unable to have this conversation with the mayor in private, I thought I would go ahead and have it today. Could we have a little? I thought we would go ahead and have the conversation that I wanted to have with the mayor in private, but I thought I would go ahead and have it today. I generally agree with the mayor's vision of our city. I've supported him in a number of instances in the past. I've always felt that the Board of Aldermen needs to lead by example, so when a group of Aldermen went ahead and decided that it was important for us to reduce the size of the Board of Aldermen, to lead by example, I certainly wasn't one of the ringleaders, but I supported that effort. And in a couple of years down here, it's going to be like Survivor Island as half of us go away and we eliminate half the positions on the board, and we will have eliminated about as much salary as the former executive director for the Missouri History Museum was making. So that's fourteen Aldermen salaries equal about what the executive director was making. And we're going to create all that civic turmoil to go ahead and try to lead by example. And mind you, the city charter was adopted by a vote of the people, and the reduction that we just had was done by a vote of the people. So we did that. Then the fire department comes over, and we're told by the mayor's office that we got all these budget problems. And we had to sit over here and go through excruciating pain trying to explain to people how their pension plans and their benefits are going to be reduced, and how we have to restructure everything for people who actually run in buildings and carry, you know, people out of burning buildings. But we had to do that. And in the spirit of cooperation, in the spirit of efficiency, in the spirit of good government, I supported that. Then we come back, and it's time to merge the economic development efforts of the city and the county. So that's good government. It's efficiency. It's the way things ought to be done. So we have legislation over there, and I supported that. Then we go ahead, and we have the Community Development Agency block grant money. And we're told that we, as Aldermen, don't know how to spend it very effectively, and we're spending it inefficiently, and we're wasting money. Now, I don't know about you, but the organizations that were receiving that money in my ward were true non-for-profits. There was a one person in my ward receiving block grant money that made five hundred thousand dollars a year. When they started pulling that money, and we had to go out and have conversations with residents from our wards who went ahead and spent their time on the boards of these organizations, and people who are making thirty and forty thousand dollars a year, and we got to say, hey, in the spirit of efficiency and good government, all that money's going to go away, and we're going to go ahead and do something different. But we had those conversations, and we worked through that, through the efforts of people like Jill. Now, we're here, and we have an organization that is receiving tax money for over forty years, never been examined. And we have an opportunity to go ahead and begin thinking about how are we doing that? And it is just shocking the amount of resistance that we've run into. And I kind of said my, you know, vitriolic part of it, but let me go ahead and start talking about the essence of what our report does and what I'd like to try to achieve from this. And I'd like to begin it by saying that while I am critical and I think changes need to be made, just like the volunteers in our little community organizations that work in our various charities, I believe that the vast majority of people serving on the ZMD, sub-district trustees, commissioners, all of the people involved in that are doing it for all the right reasons. And John Roberts, who is the face, who has become the face of the Missouri History Museum, who I have disagreed with on a number of occasions, if I've worked an hour on this, he has worked ten hours. And he has worked for free, he hasn't made money off of it, and I disagree with him in it sometimes. I just, you know, but I respect him, and I generally think he's a decent person. I just think that they're going about this a bit of the wrong way in how they've handled the whole Missouri History Museum thing, and I'd like to just say this about that. When you make a mistake, it's really important to go ahead and, you know, create public confidence and reinstate public confidence. And you can't do that if the entities that are looking over you or regulating you are acting like lapdogs. And I think that's what the public persona is of what's happening over at the Missouri History Museum. And I say that because we were doing our investigation, we involved the circuit attorney in our investigation, they were doing a criminal investigation, and I wrote a letter to the ZMD Board that approves the tax rate and sends the money to the History Museum. And I didn't ask them to cut the funding. I just said, wait, wait until we complete our investigation and see what we have here. And they couldn't do that. And I just think that was just disrespectful of our board, of my committee, and of the circuit attorney's office. And, you know, the circuit attorney completed their investigation, their reports attached to this, there were no crimes. I think there, I think it documents an environment that was really poorly managed, and there was a number of poor decisions that were made. But I just think that, you know, treating, acting like a lapdog to the, you know, in a situation like this does nothing to go ahead and instill confidence among the public. So that's why I've been, you know, feeling so strongly about this, and I have trouble, you know, being as critical as I would like because I don't want to damage the organizations, and I really respect the people that are working very, very hard to try to go ahead and keep the History Museum. And as we discovered just a couple of weeks ago, there's a real opportunity for that, to make an enormous contribution to our region if they're able to secure a donation from the Taylor family and get the Soldiers Memorial back online. What a contribution that would be, and it would be something that is very worthy, and I certainly don't want to damage that by my criticisms of the whole process there. But to get down to the report, here's what, you know, our list of recommendations are, my list of recommendations, our committee's list of recommendations. The first thing is, and this is all in everybody's mailboxes, we have a summary of it. The first thing is, is just try to clarify the roles and responsibilities of what the trustees do, what the publicly appointed sub-commissioners do, and what the, and what the ZMD commissioners do. And if I'm losing you, I know that I'm probably too close to this to probably be explaining it because it is so confusing with the different layers of government. So we start out by saying what those roles should be. One of the things that we say, which is going to be one of the more controversial aspects of it, is that the Missouri History Museum and the Missouri Botanical Garden should probably change their structure. This is a hard thing for me to say because the Missouri Botanical Garden's not going to like that very much, and the Missouri Botanical Garden was incredibly instrumental and made a huge contribution to the rebirth of the Botanical Heights neighborhood, which is in my neighborhood, one of the neighborhoods in my ward, which I take a great deal of pride in having that had accomplished, and it wouldn't have happened without the Missouri Botanical Garden. So when I go ahead and make this recommendation, it is not something that I go ahead and say, oh, this is really easy for me. It's not easy for me because I have a lot of respect for the folks over at the garden and what they do. But I say this because if you read through the circuit attorney's report, it discusses over and over and over again governance issues about lack of communication through the various boards. Now, what both they and the History Museum will tell you is that it's going to be very disruptive to our organizations, it's going to be difficult for us to go ahead and keep the trustees engaged, and how are we going to go ahead and get the commissioners that are supposedly watching the public money? How are we going to do all that? Well, they're already doing it at the other three institutions, the Science Center, the Zoo, and the Art Museum. And over the next three, four, or five years, they can slowly integrate the sub-commissioners and the trustees, so they're all on the same team, and they're all trustees. And then they can take a subset of the trustees and make them commissioners. And I think when we get those complaints about it being difficult, we can go ahead and lead by example. We're going to have Survivor Island play out down here in about eight years, and we went through the whole effort of a city vote, and we did all of that chaos that we're creating because we wanted to go ahead and lead by example, and I think it's only appropriate that both of those institutions, over time, in a way and method that is respectful to the people who have volunteered their time and who have donated money, that they go ahead and make that change. So that's the first of our recommendations, and that'll be a controversial one. The second thing is, is developing a regional plan. Right now, the big commissioner, the commissions, the Zoo, the ZMD Board, they basically collect the budgets and the bills, and then they go ahead and they reimburse them, and then they set the tax rates. And in forty years, they have never set the tax rate lower than the highest tax rate. Now, this is what's referred to in our business, the government business, as a dedicated tax. So the money goes there, it has to be spent on that, but this dedicated tax doesn't have a floor. The floor is zero. This dedicated tax has a ceiling, which means that you can't go ahead and tax at a rate higher than that. So they have always, for the last forty years, always taxed at the highest level. And that's it. All they do is they collect the money, set the rate at the highest level, and then reimburse the institutions, taking out only whatever their expenses are to do their thing. And I think it needs to be different than that. I think that they need to go ahead and, rather than just collect the money and forward it, I think that they need to go ahead and actually begin becoming more of a watchdog for the taxpayer. And I have a couple of things which in item three, I'll tell you what those are. So the one thing is, is they need to redefine the role and become a watchdog for the taxpayer. The second thing is, is they need to go ahead and they need to become the point, the place, the entity that begins developing a regional vision for our cultural institutions. And let me kind of spend a couple of seconds on what I envision that being. I think about the Great Rivers Greenway and what they have done for our region. How many of us have had a conversation over the last several years with somebody from GRG who comes in and they meet with us, they have public engagement meetings, they meet with St. Louis County, they're thinking about ways of how to go ahead and engage St. Charles County and Jefferson County? How can we go ahead and work together as a region? They work up at the state, they organize ballot initiatives. There is a coherent, thoughtful master plan in place with GRG. That doesn't exist right now with our five cultural institutions. They all have different pricing strategies. You know, we as taxpayers, you know, you have to pay to park, but you get in the free at most of the places, but you can't get in free at the other exhibits. People visiting from out of town can come and they, you know, get the same thing. Oh, by the way, if you buy a membership, you can park for free and get in for free. It's a convoluted process. They have different ones that are thinking about going on the ballot at different times, the idea of potentially expanding to Jefferson or St. Charles County. You know, there's just no cohesion or thoughtfulness to a regional master plan. And I think that, you know, that should change. I think that they should go ahead and they should have public engagement, and they should go out and really see what the public is thinking. And then they should come down to the Board of Aldermen and tell us what their thoughts are from having those public meetings. And then they should go out to the county council and do the same thing. And then when it comes time for expansion, they should go up to the state and talk to the state about what they've done over the last, you know, year, two years, three years, in trying to build consensus at a local level for how to grow the district. I don't know if many of you are aware of taking the time to look at the state statue, but the state statue that authorizes the ZMD contemplates that at some future date the Transportation Museum might get in, the St. Louis Symphony Orchestra might get in, there might be an opportunity to create an African-American museum. get in, there might be an opportunity to create an African-American museum. So, all of that's up there in state statute, but probably will never be acted on because there's no central planning authority. You go and take a look at the Smithsonian Institute and the central planning authority is Congress. Congress goes ahead, sets a budget, and then they send it over there, and then there's a, there's a rational allocation of resources, and it's not done by a dedicated tax. It's done based on need and analysis and the ability of the, the institutions of the Smithsonian to raise money on their own. So, if the Natural Museum of History is busting at the seams and they got a great board and they're growing and everything, well, they get more money. If the Science Museum does better, they get more money. If it's time to go ahead and build an African-American museum, they'll go ahead and provide the seed capital to get that started. That's how the Smithsonian operates. I've spent a fair amount of time on the phone with both their public affairs officer and their CFO. And, and I think, you know, we, we got kind of a bastardized system that, that doesn't give us the ability to do central planning completely, but I believe that the ZMD should begin taking on more of those types of responsibilities, begin looking at, you know, how we can go ahead and grow that in a way that really is meaningful to the electorate. And finally, with regard to this regional vision, is, is the issue of tourism. I, I'm a finance guy, I read business plans all the time, and, you know, we're giving this thing away and nobody is studying the impact of it on tourism. I, I looked around and I called all over the place, I found one study about six or seven years ago that as a management document would be, you know, worthless. It talks about the economic impact that these institutions have as a tourism, but we don't know how much tourism we're getting at the Zoo versus how much is coming in at the Art Museum. And nobody's gone and done the backwork to see if the taxes that they're paying in town is enough to offset the fact that we're giving them free admission. And that type of analysis can be done and should be done, and there ought to really develop a, a, a business plan for our region around the tourist industry, and then that might help us figure out whether or not we should charge non-residents to get in or not, but that analysis has never been done. So, that's what I think needs to be done from a standpoint of developing a regional plan. The, the last thing was, was developing policies and funding agreements based on certain performance measures. I talk about salaries in there, I think that they ought to establish a cap on what salaries are that the public pays, but if they feel like they need to go ahead and pay above that cap, I think they ought to have the opportunity to do that, but that money ought to be clearly defined and raised so that people contributing to it know that it's going to go to a leadership fund or something like that. And so, I have, I, I think that that would be appropriate. We talked about ethics, one of the more glaring things that concerned me was, was that the ZMD board had an ethical policy that they've adopted. The History Museum was in clear violation of that, their own ethics policy says that, oh, when somebody's in violation of that, we should probably consider cutting their funding, which, which we sat there and we asked them to wait for, for our report to be completed, and they ignored it, and of course, they fully funded them. They didn't even contemplate the idea of not fully funding somebody based on an ethic violation. I, I thought that they ought to begin tracing, tracking and benchmarking the cost of attendance, and I thought that they should go ahead and begin, you know, collecting information so that their, their contributions to these institutions were based on performance rather than just the maximum amount that the taxpayer can, that the state statute permitted and that we were approved by referendum. So, those are the, that's the gut of our report. I, I hope that you might take a couple of minutes and read it, I know you have lots to do, but that, I want to express my appreciation for the committee and Rachel Smith and the circuit attorney's office who spent a great deal of time doing their investigation. The last two points of my report is, and the, the reason I included these things is I wanted to go ahead and I wanted to create a dialogue, and, and I wanted the incidents that happened to give us a, a reflection point, a, a regional reflection point on what's really going on with the cultural districts. And so, I think that the ZMD, who approves the tax rates and sends the money to the institutions, to go ahead and make sure and drive her point home, should come down and report to the appropriate committee of the Board of Aldermen in person and our counterparts in the county every year and make an annual report to us on what's going on there. And so, that it won't fall on deaf ears, I asked them to respond, and my fifth point is, is I've asked the ZMD to go ahead and respond to this report that we just voted out of a committee yesterday and 90 days from now, so that we can go ahead and make sure that this, this dialogue just doesn't die. Now, as it turns out, I'm, you know, probably stepped down as chairman of the Parks Committee, and I, I wanted to go ahead and share this all with you today so that if some of these things don't happen and I show up over here with a ordinance that will create a non-binding referendum, we can't go ahead and change any of these things, but I want to go ahead and explain why I might show up over here if we don't get some movement with a non-binding referendum that might have reference to what the mayor's responsibilities are with regard to the ZMD. So, with that, I complete my report and I thank all of you for patiently listening to me today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the report.
That's the extent of second reading of resolutions committee adoptions.
Miss Linus unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Wednesday, intergovernmental meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the leisure room. Also, on Wednesday, we have a housing meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Thursday, Ways and Means Committee meeting, 9:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. And also, we'll be discussing the mid-year budget review by the Budget Director. Friday, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the third.
Mr. President, members of board, I'm calling a streets meeting for this Thursday at 11:00. Anybody that has a bill in the Streets Committee is welcome to contact the President so that it can be put in the journal.
Alderman, would you like to remind people about adding their name to the resolution that you had for the man that's 98 years old?
Oh, yes. That resolution that we have, that was one for Oakley Clark, right?
Yes.
Mr. Oakley Clark, who has been one of the foundations in the St. Louis community for years and years and years, and anybody who would like to have their name placed on that resolution, he's 96 years old, and he's going to have a birthday party coming up. And anybody that like, would like to have their name on that resolution, contact the President or the clerk and your name will be added.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of board. We will be starting up our 22nd Ward regular monthly meetings for 2014. There's been a change in location, so our meetings will be on Tuesdays, the last Tuesday of the month, rather than the last Thursday of the month. So, the next meeting is January 28th at the Omega Center, 3900 Goodfellow. Next Tuesday, January 28th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Omega Center, 3900 Goodfellow. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the third.
Mr. President, I don't know whether I'm late or not, but is it possible we could make a movement, a motion, to put Mr. Oakley Clark's resolution in bank so everybody would have an opportunity to be on that because after 96 years old, he couldn't have made any enemies?
Yeah. At this point, it would be our time, but if we could just ask everybody to just give your name to the clerk, that'd be the easiest right now.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All, all of them from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. First, I wanted to recognize Walgreens for their expression challenge program that allows young people to be creative in all of the arts, to look at how they make decisions in their lives. Today, they will be making the awards in the St. Louis area for all the high school students that participated. I was one of the judges, I saw a lot of creative work that was done, and I'm looking forward to who won this evening. Also, I'd like to invite you to come to the 19th Ward and experience the new facility for KDHX radio station. It is open, there's a beautiful cafe on the first floor, they also have an event space with stage and sound system is fabulous. They still have the radio station that is operating, and also, they have recording studios where you can be taught how to create your own videos and CD songs. And also, they still have the education programs working with the community there, too. They're working with Channel 9, UMSO's NPR station, and the Beacon newspaper, so there's a lot of collaborative opportunities there for communication coming out of that area. MLK events took a lot out of me, but I enjoyed it. I never saw so many young people paying attention to Martin Luther King Day. We experienced an opportunity in our ward to work with Harris-Stowe students, St. Louis University students, students from the high schools and elementary schools. And I just wanted to thank all of those entities that made that happen. And so, the St. Louis Community Foundation, the Katie Anne Foundation, Harris-Stowe State University, the 100 Collegiate, the Alpha Young Men, and SLU students, they created such a wonderful environment for that weekend. They created their own posters in a session on Saturday. They also had their own rally on Harris-Stowe campus after the march, and for those of you who were there, you saw SLU came out with 150 students. Harris-Stowe had a large number turn out, the young Alpha Men turned out, all these young people. But the rally was the most important thing at the Harris-Stowe campus afterwards. The young people had a dialogue about social media and bullying, and it was amazing how they talked about what they're tired of, and we don't think they are, but they are. And they also talked about sagging pants. We actually had some young men stand up, pull up their pants, and declare that they wouldn't sag anymore. We had young men asking the others to go out and talk on behalf of not sagging anymore. They said we need to respect ourselves and respect our communities. Young women said, you can't walk down the street with me with your pants sagging. I was shocked. So, as we move forward, we still have other MLK events. One will be this Sunday at St. Olaf's Rock Church at 3:00 p.m. Most of you know that our First Lady Anita Banks of the 5th Senatorial District, she has stayed involved, and this is one of her projects that she has at St. Olaf's Rock Church every year. And the young people really produce some great essays. So, again, I just want to say thank you to our community, and if we do nothing else, you need to stay involved with the young people.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The 26th Ward will resume their monthly meetings, January 30th, 11:41, Belt, as Junior Memorial Church, and that'll be Thursday at 6:30, January 30th. Thank you.
All right. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to wish my three-year-old grandson happy birthday for today.
Oh, awesome. Let's give him a round of applause. I'm sure you're a very proud grandfather. Any further announcements? No further announcements? All of them from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would move for the excuse absence of the Aldermen from the first, the second, the 13th, the 14th, and the 16th.
Been moved by all of them from the seventh, second by all of them from the 22nd, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. All of them, all of them from the seventh, recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn our meeting until Friday, January 31st at 10:00 a.m.
Moved by all of them from the seventh and 10:02 on that motion, second by all of them from the 11th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, stand adjourned.